Special session of Athens City Council. But actually, we're going to start with the mayor as a couple resolutions he needs to deal with first.
Yes, actually about three, let me see, even four maybe. If I can find the fourth one. First off, not to ease the issue there, I'd like to let everybody know that the university agreed to continue the contributions of $50,000 to the next one. We extended that. So I'd like to just acknowledge the fact that it was gracious of it, and again, it's to assist for our pumper truck. We know we need to buy one. We know we need the funds, and the conversation, of course, has evolved between us, Dr. McDavid's myself, about the safety for the community. So there's a statement that went out about 4:00 today, and if there's any questions about it, I'll be willing to answer them. Let's see. There is another announcement about the alternate route. I believe we're going to be, right now, we're discussing the alternate route on East State Street in terms of the direction. I think it's A1, of course. The East State and U.S. Route 33 interchange, alternative selected. The alternative one, of course, is just without the minimum amount of urgent diamond. If you have any questions to that, we'll probably put that together as a packet along the way. And then last, of course, is two proclamations. I'm going to do the second one first and the first one last. This evening, I did a proclamation at Jack Yo's for Ohio Brew Week, and I'll go through the whole thing, just without the drinking, because it turned into a drinking party every time I said "whereas." I did not start that, I don't think. I think somebody else did. So let me get through that one at first, and then the other one more important. And I mention this because, well, let me get with this one first of all. Whereas, the Sea of Athens recognized Ohio Brew Week's ninth year and celebrates this festival, that this festival contributes to cultural richness, diversity, prosperity of the community, and that Ohio Brew Week is considered a hallmark event for Athens in the summertime, a testament to the vision of its originator, John Sparhawk. Whereas, we also recognize, no drinking now, we recognize the significant contribution Ohio Brew Week and Athens have built in the Ohio craft brew industry, which we had a lecture earlier today about how well that's doing. And whereas, nine years of Ohio Brew Week organizers have taken John's vision, John Sparhawk's vision, created an event that brings thousands to our regions. They took John Sparhawk's idea and through many long hours and effort, built an event that is nationally known and respected as a world-class craft beer event that reflects well in our community. And whereas, today, we contribute, we continue to honor John Sparhawk for his passion to create an event that helped local commerce thrive as visits come as far as California, Maine, Texas. John's dedication to Athens continues to inspire us all to give back and to contribute to help each other. We are here today, here being a Jack Yo's, of course, not City Council, that was established much longer ago, to collaborate and help each other. We're here because one man said, John Sparhawk said, "Why the hell not?" And whereas, we celebrate John's life and love of Athens, his family, his community. He gave us Ohio Brew Week, and now we celebrate his success. Now therefore, I, Paul Wile, Mayor of the City of Athens, do hereby proclaim Friday 11th, July 11th to July 19th as Ohio Brew Week, and tomorrow, Tuesday, the 15th of 2004, July 15th, 2004, as John Sparhawk Day. And that's in the City of Athens, and we encourage everybody to give back to the community in some way, if you can, and wear a flowered shirt, John's alibi. And that's signed by me, and as I say, that was tonight's. And the other one is to Alvy McWilliams. And I mention this because this is two different sides of what we are as a city. It shows the diversity. We have an economic side, we have a fun and funky side with flowered shirts and craft brews, and we have the other side, which is the community project plant, the Shade Tree Commission, and what one person can give so much for. I don't know if you know that she is leaving our area. We're, as a community, going to have a loss of that. And I say that because I've known her for many years, I've respected her opinion on trees, which I could say I'm, I can recognize some trees, but don't ask me to say the Latin names. So let me get to this proclamation. No drinking on this one either, although I think it'd be one, I suspect. Whereas, after many years of serving her community, Alvy McWilliams is leaving Athens, Ohio. And as I say, that is something to be remarked on. And whereas, Alvy McWilliams is one of the founders of Project Plant, is one of the founders of Project Plant. It's spent on beautifying Athens, Ohio, since 1984. Okay? And since she, and still volunteering her time today in Project Plant programs, making the city attractive through civic gardens and flower baskets for the past 30 years. And whereas, she has been a member of the Athens Shade Tree Commission, working to promote and manage our urban forests. As past Chair of this commission, Alvy's involvement has been vital in our city's 24-year designation as a tree city. There are very few cities that have that, I claim. And whereas, Alvy McWilliams' participation in community organizations, such as a core member as the Near East Side Nave Association, or NINA as we so well know it, and an appreciation for our outstanding service and many years of volunteering her time to make our community great, a great place to live. Now therefore, I, Paul Wile, Mayor of the City of Athens, do hereby proclaim Monday, today, July 14th, 2014, as Alvy McWilliams' Day, encourage all citizens to congratulate her on her many accomplishments, and wish her well in her new adventures away from Athens. As I say, there will be a loss on that. And, thank you. Thank you for sharing this time.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, again, this is a special session of Athens City Council, a little bit different in the agenda. First of all, we need to establish a quorum. We have all members present, and we begin with an ordinance for a third reading, Ordinance 5414, an ordinance to increase the city income tax by 10 hundredths percent, which is 10% per annum for a period of 20 years, and authorizing the question of the increase to be placed on the ballot at the next general election to be held on November 4th, 2014, and declaring an emergency. Member Nysley, I think, has a few words about this.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I move adoption of Ordinance 5414.
Second.
And the purpose of this is stated in the title, is to have an income tax levy that would be 1/10 of 1%, and as we've discussed in some of the other council meetings, to get an idea of what that would be, would be for a household paying income taxes on $30,000, that would be approximately $30 per year in income tax. What this would do is continue the good work of what we've done with a previous levy that helped for the construction of the community center, and this one has been broadened slightly because it would be for arts, parks, and recreation funding. So it would encompass a little bit of a broader program, and the text on it says that what it would include would be all expenses associated with the construction of a swimming pool, accessibility to all playgrounds, trails and facilities, property acquisition, equipment and furnishing, and maintenance, operation and staffing of existing and new arts, parks, and recreation facilities and grounds in the city of Athens. And this would be, this ordinance, when approved, would then be, notice would be given to the Board of Elections so that it could be placed on the ballot for this fall's election, for the voters to decide whether or not to approve it.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions from council members?
It's 1/10, 1%, 1/10%.
10%. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
And I think it's important to also point out that this would be for 20 years. So people think about maintenance and such. I have to kind of commend our maintenance and management people because they have made so much of our facilities last as long as they have. Probably, there are very few cities that have a swimming pool as old as ours, and they jury-rigged their, you know, trucks to last longer, and then they figure out how to use the pieces, and I think that, you know, we are tops in that sort of process. So I think that people get a good value for the money that they do spend on this sort of city income tax levy.
Very good points. Again, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay, the ordinance is adopted. We'll move on to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 6314, an ordinance amending Title III of the Athens City Code, Chapter 3.07, Administrative Departments, Boards, and Commissions, Section 3.07.70, the Athens City Commission on Disabilities. Ordinance 6514, an ordinance authorizing concrete restoration at the fire station headquarters on Columbus Road and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 6614, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of fitness equipment for the community center. Ordinance 6714, an ordinance amending the 2014 appropriation ordinance. Ordinance 6814, an ordinance amending the 2014 staffing levels and declaring an emergency. I'm sorry, did I move on? I'm sorry. I was just...
And this is for 68?
Where are we?
We're at 6814.
Okay.
And it is for that one?
Staffing.
That's correct.
An amendment?
No process, it needs to be changed. So do we need to move to amend?
So I need to move to amend. Mr. President, I move to amend Ordinance 6814.
Second.
And the purpose of the amendment being for further clarification from our Service Safety Director.
Thank you. I apologize. The city engineer is determined that not to amend the sixth sewer maintenance position at this time, so he will struggle on with his crew as he has.
So essentially, Athens will increase.
And I apologize for the late notice.
Okay.
So it's a reduction in what you're asking for.
Rather, no change.
Rather, no change in what?
In that section.
Right. So that the remaining change will be that we will be increasing the patrol officers from the 18 to 19 through September 30th, as originally discussed, but we will be not needing the maintenance technician, trainee labor with the sewer department.
So we have amendment to Ordinance 6814 has been proposed and seconded, I believe. All those in favor of amending the ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is amended, read for the first time, for the first time. Okay. And we move on to Ordinance 60, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application to participate in the 2015 state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs for Issue One funds, and to execute contracts as required.
I believe we need to, do we need to suspend this? For Issue One? Yeah, we do not. It is like the first week in September, that's why we're trying to read through them here in the summer to face this same crutch in September.
And then we have a resolution for second reading. Resolution 1014, a resolution to place the issue of increasing the city income tax by 10 hundredths percent, .1% per annum for a period of 20 years, beginning January 1st, 2016, on the ballot at the next general election of November 4th, 2014, directing the Board of Elections of Athens County to conduct the election and declaring an emergency. This is second reading. And with that, we will adjourn the special session, and we will have Planning and Development Committee meeting.
I am so surprised this is the only committee meeting that's tonight.
Did you want to amend?
No.
Add something? Okay.
I'm just missing the, you know, finance and personnel.
Oh, okay.
You know?
Okay.
Okay. We have three general committee agenda items tonight. First is the Armory, which is the ad hoc committee. As you remember, the Armory ad hoc was established by council and the mayor several, oh, not even months ago, it's been a few months. And so Steve Patterson has been running those meetings, and we'd like to, and he'd like to update us on what's going on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, we've had three meetings. The committee has nine members that sit on this particular ad hoc committee. And again, we've been exploring the possibility of bringing the Armory back into civic use again. The ad hoc committee has come up with a letter, and if you don't mind, I'd like to read that The opinion of the ad hoc committee, addressed to Mayor Paul Wile and to Athens City Council, it states, "The members of the Armory Ad Hoc Committee have been charged with evaluating alternatives and considering financial and funding strategies that can bring the Armory back into civic purpose. To that end, we would like to request the Athens City Council consider funding the update of the 2003 Armory Study that was completed by RBC Architects." The cost of the updated, this cost of this update is $7,000 and could potentially come from the Athens City Enhancement account. Furthermore, the Athens County Convention and Visitors Bureau is very interested in the Armory being brought back into civic usefulness and is willing to commit a $500 match to update the Armory Study. We believe the update of the study would be a good foundation to understanding what the true costs of getting the Armory renovated and repaired would be. Such work would be done following the U.S. Department of Interior Standards for Historic Preservation. Having the updated study would help us to better understand the types of uses, what types of uses are financially possible in the Armory, and how to fully utilize the building in a manner that is not a long-term financial burden to the city. The ad hoc committee is very interested in the possibility of the Armory, in the possibilities of the Armory, and we know that the community largely supports seeing the Armory returned to productive service or productive use. The Armory Ad Hoc Committee has received letters of support to preserve and to revitalize the Armory, receiving letters from the Athens County Historical Society, the Athens AMVETS Post 21, Ohio District 21 AMVETS, Ohio State AMVETS, the Athens Area Citizens for the Arts, and from AMAC, the Athens Municipal Arts Commission. We believe that through the right use of the building, through the right uses, the building can be an economic generator for the uptown and to keep it a key part of the collective civic life. So that said, again, to kind of give people a brief overview as to some of the things that this $7,000 would go towards, primarily a reassessment or an option study to look at the building, primarily the stabilization of the building envelope, and special attention to the exterior masonry, HVAC system, and upgrades, upgrade and replacement, and lifecycle assessment for a HVAC system, building accessibility, which is a big issue with the Armory, and outline for future usability focusing on the efficiency and community involvement of the Armory itself. Yes?
So we have a Historical and Preservation Committee. Are there people on your ad hoc committee that are part of that committee? Because I know they don't have a letter submitted, but I just thought those groups should be.
Currently, no. And yes, I think those two should come to a meeting and, you know...
So nobody from that group has been a part of the ad hoc meetings to this date?
No, other than if Paul Logue is, if Paul Logue is on that, Paul Logue...
He is on both.
So Paul Logue is one of the members of the ad hoc committee.
So it seems we might need to pull them in, or another member anyway, since he's the administration person.
Sure.
I think something that we've discussed with Kathy and such is if members of the community, or businesses of the community, want to donate towards projects with, especially with this current idea, is that what we have to do in order to set up a line for these sort of donations, because if, we've already gotten a few donations, we need to establish a chain of, you know, acquisition for it, so in case something happens, we can put it back to the people who have made it.
Right, we would have to track it, so we have a total, because this isn't something, this money isn't all going to be raised, you know, next month. But yes, as that money comes in, depending on who's taking in that money, we need to track that separately. That can't be done specifically in our system, you know, that needs to be a spreadsheet set up, so whoever wants whoever to do that, you know, I'm willing to help, but, you know, somebody else might want to, you know, watch what comes in and all that. But we do have to set that money aside in a separate account line so that we can track it.
So would it be an account line under which?
The Armory Hudson has its own fund, 583, and so we just put a line in there that says donations, dash Armory.
Right.
So it's not for both of them, you know, we can separate it specifically for the Armory. So we have a lot of donation account lines in our system, so that's...
So we can model it after one of those.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
I would suggest that we do that sooner than later, because we are beginning to get interest in this, and even if governmental, like the Visitor and Visitor Bureau.
Convention Bureau.
And, yes, page. And we need to be able to track those and put those in there to have transparency.
Sure. I agree.
Yeah. Paul?
We have about 14 donation fund lines in our accounts already. If you check your prior year-to-date revenue reports, you'll see that. Total estimated revenue for all these is about $104, but it goes everything from the fire trucks to donations from our, for Arts West, for Recreation Community Center. So there is a series of fund lines for this type of stuff. Generating one under the 580 is probably not a problem, I suspect.
Right.
Tracking, again, we just have to distinguish one from the other, Hudson and the Armory. Is that what it is? The other one's Hudson, is it?
Armory Hudson.
It's the same fund, it's Armory slash Hudson. It's one fund because it's a small fund, and not a lot of, two buildings, not a lot of money spent on those. But in the account line, we can say Armory, donations Armory.
So council needs to authorize to accept those. So we need to have something that comes forward to accept those. Is an ordinance to accept it, or a resolution?
Resolution.
It's an ordinance, so...
Probably when you get the money.
Yeah. Well, I mean, some money has already come forward, or there's just promise of money.
From the Visitors Bureau.
But any, right. Okay, so there's a match.
From the community itself, just to point out. I mean, we did receive a letter from a local business that is very interested in doing a set-aside donation, so that would be different, that it's not going from one government budget line right now, it would be coming in from a...
Right. But as people are starting to talk about it more, there might be more interest.
Correct.
Right?
Which is impressive that there has been someone already that has come forward and said, "I would like to set aside to see the Armory come back to life again."
Yep.
So, and this is, this is a great compilation of letters of support from veterans organizations as well as the Historical Society, and it sounds like they'd be willing, the Historical Society would be willing to offer kind of a technical assistance about the background of the building. And so a couple of clarifying questions then. So the $7,000 or this estimate from RVC would take us on the first step of, here's what the shape the building's in, here's what we'd have to do to stabilize it, here's what we'd have to do for the HVAC system and accessibility, and then here are the possibilities. And then from there, so are we saying that we would take donations right now to help pay for this $7,000 cost of this initial, you know, proposal from RVC? Or are we taking donations for the larger project, which we don't know what the larger project is right now?
Well, this came out in the ad hoc committee, is knowing full well, this, the $7,000, this is our starting point, understanding the building's integrity, what is it going to cost in $2,014 to put in a new HVAC system, to put in fire suppression, to put in an elevator if that were needed, for ADA it would be, to put proper egress exits throughout the building if it was to be a venue that could seat 450 people, whatever it ends up becoming, that's what this would do, would be to explore those, and it would kind of be, as you were saying, it's kind of, I kind of liken it to what the, oh, help me out, who was the group that came in and did the energy efficiency?
Protection.
Profession group, where it was essentially kind of à la carte, kind of picked and choose what you wanted, so this would be similar to that. And then the next phase, which is what the ad hoc committee will be looking into, is reaching out further to see what now, beyond this element, what are we going to want this building to become? Do we want it to become a center for performing arts? Do we want it to become a convention center? Do we want it to become a business incubator? What do we want the whole building to essentially morph into, that this is stabilization?
This is solely stabilization.
Keep thinking about what it's going to cost to move forward. I kind of look, I kind of think about it as white box.
So did I, so is the money for the $7,000, or is it for the project beyond? Because the project beyond could be $6 million, I mean, or, depending on what we decide.
Well, I think it's for the planning, the next step. I think it's for the planning phase of the next step to where money going into, which is probably going to, it's going to have a cost to it as well, to look further to have, you know, probably have a town hall meeting to where the citizens can come in and look at possible design elements, for businesses to sit there and say, whatever, you know, whatever it ends up becoming. And that's probably going to have a $30,000 price tag to it too, so I can see people, people are starting to want to donate just to see this, my conversations that I've had, people want to see this building be put to use as opposed to sitting on the end of Court Street in its current state.
Well, and I think, again, the question is, whenever you go into these fundraising opportunities, people want to know where their money's going.
Certainly.
So, I mean, and Chris, if I understand you, your question is, is the city, are we going to front this $7,000, or are we going to accept donations to that $7,000? And if you want to donate, do you know, say where your money, well, no, I'd like to wait later on for the bigger project, or, you know, I think we're structuring that right now tonight. We need to structure what we want. I mean, is the city willing to pay? I guess we could accept the in-kind donation of 500 from the Convention and Visitors Bureau, but $6,500, are we paying that out of our coffers, or are we going to accept donations into that?
And that's largely the big question I had regarding spending $7,000 for the proposals from the architect. Is that going to better assist us, so if we spend this money and have a study telling us what needs to be done, will that better prepare us or assist us in attaining or pursuing other grant money that's, because we're a historic city now, or is that beneficial for us to pursue this route because it puts us better prepared for future attainment of grants?
It's the opinion of the ad hoc committee that the answer to that question is yes. You know, because right now, in $2,014, we know, we don't know what's realistic, we don't know where we're starting from. It's, in my head, I keep thinking, it's a chicken or the egg. If we don't have this study done, we're not going to know what the dollar amount is to have a HVAC system put in these days, or what's it going to cost to have fire suppression for a building that has largely, you know, a wooden truss with steel-beamed ceiling, you know, heavy timber floor between the first and second level. I mean, there's a lot that needs to be looked at and explored, but if we don't know what in 2014, the building's, you know, structural integrity looks like, then how can we move forwards? And so we, so that's what the ad hoc committee came up with.
So grant funders really, I think they like to see that there's been the legwork and the structure put in place, and we've said that all along since we became a historic city as well, that all these things are checkboxes on a grant form, and having a plan in place saying, "We know this is what we need, now we need your help." And having a plan in place saying, "We know this is what we need, now we need your help," I would say would improve your chances of getting funding.
Right.
From private donations or wherever the money comes from.
Right.
And I'm not meaning to question that it's not a good idea. I'm just saying, we need to accept donations of what portion of it are we accepting grants.
So people who.
We're reading the letters here in front of us, and Jackie O's mayor, you said something about a Sparbuck beer, said that they donate a quarter for every pint sold now for the pre-planning, planning phase, as does, what did you say? This is Paige's.
I love it, you have to pre-plan to plan.
And it does say, "The planner in me." Re-plan, but in the email stating Paige's stance was willing to commit $500 to match to the updated Armory study.
Right.
So I think people are willing to donate. I wouldn't even, you know, like to stop at $7,000. I think with the momentum that's going.
Right.
We could keep going in two letters, that they aren't waiting until we decide or anything. They, they're ready to do the study and go.
It's like seed money for an incubator.
Thank you.
I think that, I think also it needs to be recognized that the building is being used right now by the city, and we need to establish whether that continue, you know, whether right now it's being used for records and whether that is appropriate use for it given whether they will continue to be safely stored and such within the future, what needs to happen with the building. We don't, I mean.
So you're saying that even the city could use an updated study to tell us whether or not the building is in good shape to continue using it as we're using it? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I think that that's one aspect.
I think we already know that it's not really appropriate for storage of records as it is. With no heating or cooling system, we know that we need to do something about that.
Right.
So, but even this study and moving forward, it's going to take a while, take a lot of money and take some time. And so I, you know, it's up to you if you want to start it and then go from there, but I don't think we're going to have to go in there and get all our records out of there by the end of the summer or anything like that.
No, I agree. But I think that whatever, we have, as, okay, this is like playing total devil's advocate. I know I'm going to be probably misquoted, but if push came to shove and it, how do we know that it's not just this giant massive fire trap that we need to know? And it will cost a gazillion dollars to fix. As a city, we need to know whether, as a responsible city, that'd be really, really sad that it was just not worth saving either. I mean, we're in the dark right now.
Well, we are because we have a 2003 study, which.
Yeah, but who knows how much damage has been done in 11 years?
We have done repairs on this. We've done roof repairs.
Okay.
We've done other repairs along the way, masonry repairs. So that's not like we've just been letting it sit there and decay.
Right.
Can I just get a little bit of background about the 2003 study and, yes, acknowledging that we.
That was initiated by Hillfordy, actually initiated by the Historical Society, Genealogy and Historic Society. At that time, they had, I think they had a donation, they were looking to move their footprint from their present location over to the Armory. They did a study, I forget what the total amount, six million was it or something?
Well, the art, just for your envelope, that that, those at the time.
Was about 1.2.
Right.
Okay, yeah. And Hillfordy, of course, is a high-end system.
And this was, yeah, changing some uses was almost four.
3.8. And again, they, the model that was put out there was, of course, is to make it a showcase, a gallery as well as a changing, interactive museum. They were actually going to cover, if I remember, and this would probably cross-thread with the Historical Society, is actually like a shell on the front cortical area, like so it would be enclosed. Probably before most of your tenure, we had another grassroots movement to look at this as a performance space. I think we had, which, Panagioti Knoll did a study of it, Bob Winter did it, they did a presentation on the possibilities of this. This was about five years ago, maybe?
That was last ad hoc committee.
That was last ad hoc.
Yes.
I tell you, should they have no trouble saying, "Let's spend some money and look at the envelope." As a records retention place, I think that's what it's being used for and it needs to be improved. I, but at the same time, acknowledge it's going to cost more than seven, to do $7,000 of evaluation just to look at the envelope is adequate from my point of view. The next step after that, what do we do with it? It's being used right now.
Right.
Okay? I hesitate to say, to start, you know, dreaming of what we could do, because those dreams have been formulated before. Many people look towards the Armory in Marietta as the touchstone, but that's not going anywhere. The last conversations I've had with the Marietta administration, it goes in fitch and starts, and most of the time, they can't get traction on what to make it as a money-maker or revenue-neutral. Okay? Not to poo-poo it, but the fact is, it hasn't gone anywhere, and I think they had seed money of a half a million dollars. Okay? Right now, we're talking about 1.4 approximately for our parking garage. We're also talking about a half a million dollars for a pumper truck, okay? So when we blue-sky this, I have no problem saying, "Let's look at this." Okay? And again, this is an administrative thing. We can find money right now in the 250 or in the 5, what is it, 582? Not that there's a lot, I'd have to look at it. We may need appropriations on that. I have no problem looking at it for its integrity as a record retention. And anything you think about doing with it, you'll have to say, "What do we do with those records when we're done?" I know we can throw them in a dumpster someplace, but that's probably not the appropriate use of records at this point.
Right.
Okay? So, and again, this is more administrative than legislative. I'll accept your appropriation of extra money, I'll accept the fact that you'll give an acknowledgement of funds being donated. And again, we have lots of donation funds out there that we can scour up quite a bit. I mean, at the same time, I do think we need to look at it. Climate control, accessibility, electric, plumbing, these are all necessities right there. We have spent money on it, we always do. We check it as much as possible. We're trying to clear it out and make it so it's not the latest landfill on Court Street, okay? We're working on that. And it's always, it's always a difficult issue because what, you know, what you characterize as a capital asset worth retaining? What do you want to hold on to? Personally, I'm a pack rat, so therefore I'm always erring on the side of keeping things or not, but the fact is, there are things like obsolete computers and empty file cabinets to be dealt with in there.
Do we have access to those two prior reports? Did the ad hoc committee?
We do, yes. The ad hoc committee has had access to everything moving forward.
They did review those.
Yes, yeah, we, which has been really great in this, the planning of this, is being able to sit there and look at the old report and as the mayor was saying, you know, understanding the fact that the Hillfordy report, when it was looked at, being looked at for possibly becoming the Historical Society's museum, is the fact that for the building architecture in and of itself, which included elevators, HVAC system, fire suppression, everything that we just got done listing, and essentially turning it into a white box that would be completely malleable was, again, I think you said, 1.6 million or something like that.
Yeah.
For that amount.
1.2.
And then everything else was for all the design elements that were to go into this, which were revolving stages and things that, you know, whatever, which was 3 million.
And they did present to the planner sometime in January, I believe, a number of, the estimate of what those dollars would cost in this present time, I think it was 1.8 or something like that.
We can get that information and send it to all of council.
Yeah. And realize, you still have, you know, parking issues if you decide to turn it into a performing space. The best case scenario would be to rezone it as a B2D, which of course has been rejected by previous councils because that would take the commercial parking into the parking garage. So there are issues with that, too.
If I may, I mean, one of the things that has come through with the ad hoc committee addressing parking is the fact that we do have a parking garage right across the street, and if someone were to park their car at one side of Walmart's parking lot and walk all the way in to get milk in the back, it's probably the same distance of parking the parking garage and walking down to a performing, whatever's going on in the Armory. I mean, that's a culture shift. That's education and educating the public. We have bike lanes, we have bike trails, we have, we, I think.
I'm not objecting to it.
We can make it happen.
Basically, they can stop and go to a restaurant between point A and point B.
I'm with you, mayor.
So that's not, that to me is not an issue right there. But again, if you, if you start saying, "Okay, let's make it a performing space," and I think there was a display earlier at the back end of last semester at the, at CICRE, I took a lot of pitches of it, and not great pitches, to tell you the truth, but it was interesting, their concept, and it was supposed to be a performing space. I did notice they didn't put any mechanics rooms in there, so they were not really being realistic in terms of their space utilization. But there are people thinking about this. I mean, that was somebody's, you know, project.
True.
Everybody looks at it at the back end of Court Street, the south, north end of Court Street, and it's a beautiful building. But if we make it performing, I really am leery about making performing slash records retention. So we have to find a home for the records, which include every department, they have their separate, so your stuff is critical, the police are critical, the law, law director's stuff is critical, the mayor's stuff, some things, you know, they have a sunset date, other things are permanent and have to be kept in shape. So what other storage area do we acquire at this point? And what's that going to cost?
Or what's existing that we could turn into storage? I mean, that's where I think, personally, I think there needs to be an inventory of current city properties that could be, we can shuffle the deck in a number of different ways.
Why don't you go to the county auditor's website and put in City of Athens and see how many plots you get?
Right.
You'll be amazed. Most of them are like twelfordts plots where we have a lift station or something like that, or a well.
So what I'm hearing, kind of to, to help the discussion along, is that the mayor and council generally thinks that having an update on the needs of the building, the building envelope, is a good idea and that going ahead with the $7,000 and donations from the community, if they are earmarked for the pre-planning plan, I guess is what we can call it, is a realistic next step for the Armory. Maybe one of the things that could be included is the records retention because that obviously is an important part, seeing how that's the use of the Armory right now. Does that sound like a good place to go forward? Paul?
And I, again, if you look at the 250 Athens enhancement, we have $105,000 appropriated right now. We have certified resources, another 79. In the start of the year, you've appropriated an extra 25. That extra 25 was for electrical aggregation, okay? But the fact is, will, if, I may need to go back, come back to you for that extra 7,000 because that wasn't in the mix.
Right, okay.
But we have the resources for.
But it may need to be appropriated specifically for the line item, so.
When the time comes. I can probably pull, I'll check my accounts, but as I had some of that earmarked already. Basically, most of it is already concentrated to do one thing or the other.
Right.
So I hesitate to dip into it, but it can be replenished. And it doesn't have to be done immediately. The fact is, we can always enter into contract to get the update as needed, okay?
Right.
But again, my specific look at this is the envelope, the physical building, rather than saying, "What can we do with it?" Because there are things we can do with it. We've already, we've already, you know, danced that dance at least twice so far, and it's, it's good to think about those things because that's where we want to go. We want something that's a showcase there. You know, I've had people approach me from everything from, you know, dorms to bed and breakfasts, you know?
Right.
But I know that it's got to be public, and it is, you know, and even a record retention can be public too.
Right.
But the fact is, I can't, I can't actually say the record will be safe, we have a dual purpose, like, you know, dance, performing arts and records. I hesitate to put those in the same.
So what I'm hearing you say is, you're fine with spending the money, you want to know about the physical structure, not a whole 10 pages about what the space is going to be used for.
Yes.
You just want to know, tell us what the upgrades are going to be, what we need to do to maintain this building.
And I may have to come back for you to actually appropriate that money, to do the upgrades.
Right.
Because that, to me, is more important, to get, to get the basics, the white box you're talking about.
Well, so I think that the pre-planning plan would include the, the planner in me is laughing at that one, but the.
How about the pre-pre-plan?
The pre-plan, plan, plan. And that we need to look at the box, making sure that it is going to survive the next few years that it's going to take to decide as a community what to do with it and some of the ADA issues because no matter what we do with it, it's going to have those specific issues because it may be the, so astronomically expensive that that kind of drives where it can go. And to, and the, knowing that it has record retention job right now and where that potential could be, if that's, you know, we can have a museum of record retention. That's the 70 and that's right.
Let's look at the possibilities. Some records have to be.
Historic records.
As, as physical records. Other ones can be done electronically. Realize, if we say we're going to spend a quarter million dollars to turn it all into a cloud and keep it that away, and if that's acceptable to.
Right.
All our record retention policies.
Right.
Then that's one way to get rid of it, right? It just disappears and ends up somewhere as electronic-based, searchable electronic based.
So clearly, I personally would like to see the mayor, we have the recommendations from the ad hoc, but I would like to see the mayor go into the agreement with RVC to tell them specifically what we want because I think on council, we'll be a bit frustrated if we get a report that says the opposite. So I think, I think that would be an important piece here so that administratively, you're happy with spending this money as well and we appropriate, but that we get the report that we're looking for, that we don't end up paying for something that isn't what we were looking for.
Okay.
Is that fair enough?
It is, and this proposal that we have from, dated in March from RVC, outlines four services. One, stabilization of the building envelope, special attention to the exterior masonry. Two, HVAC system upgrades, replacement and lifecycle assessment. Three, building accessibility. And here, here we start to rubber and road kind of separate, outline for future usability focusing on efficiency and community involvement. And then when we look at exclusions, would be site environmental analysis. We ask that the owner take responsibility for determining if there is any site contamination and correction of same. We know there is. And it says, again, any work related to asbestos-containing materials, et cetera.
So that would be not, not in.
It's not included in this study.
It's not.
I'm saying, we know and we've got to get an update.
But that's another assessment.
So allowing us to negotiate what our deliverable would be.
I think that's real important.
Yeah.
So it might not be a $7,000 study if we're canceling some of those requests or.
Might be more.
Well, I think it may be more if you want environmental, an environmental assessment is going to be more.
Chris? But I was just going to say, I agree with the other council members that it's an administrative decision where we want to see an agreement that the city can work with and is useful to us.
Probably we need, I would probably go back and talk to RVC, but also the ad hoc committee as well as Historic Preservation Society Commission, just to see what they're thinking about. Those would be the launch points. We've taken tours of this. I've been on several tours with citizens and interested parties, and I remember sitting in the last, one of the last ones, of course, they said, "Can we challenge the front?" And I said, "If you want to start preservation tax credits, you can't do that." And that was, that was, that was a non-negotiable. So you, you have to work with the, you know, you have to work with the frontage that you have and what you have there to a certain extent. And again, it's, to my mind, it's a beautiful building. The main drill floor is beautiful. You know, there's, there's discussion about, "Let's chop it up into cubicles and make little locks of it." I just shudder to think about that because I look at that and say, "There's so much potential there for what we can do." But then it comes down to, you know, pumper trucks, fire, you know, police, you know, as I say, right now, we're still getting the evaluation for the parking garage, which we know has a steady revenue stream, whereas this, we have no idea where it's going to come from. And we have lots of needs. I mean, I just had a discussion with the neighborhood associations, talking about the accessibility of Arts West. of Arts West. You know, it's not adequate in terms of for bathrooms, for wheelchair accessibility. It's adequate, but it's barely adequate. So we, you know, this same dialogue I have with President McDavid about the ridges, you know? He's got buildings he's using has to fix, much less the ones he's not using has to fix. And it's easy, and I've got components in the administration who say, just get rid of it, sell it. But I, you wouldn't want to do that. You know, it's too, it's too beautiful a building to just rely on the private sector just haphazardly decide what to do with it.
I just wanted to point out that if you change the scope of the RVC's duties and take out the planning study for future uses, then you can't accept money from these people that are giving you money for that, just to keep that clear. It's very clear in these letters that they are donating money for this study expecting some, you know, some information about how the building can be used.
I think if we have a good number of what it would cost to get it up to the base, the white box, as you say, I think there will be a second phase where we would start looking, saying, what can we do with it? I mean, that, to me, is almost intrinsic to say, you know, right now, from my point of view, let's just concentrate on records retention, the environment of the building. After that, I think there will be a second opportunity for, to blue sky, going back all the way to what we've seen before, what we've rehashed before from the citizens. Because they, you know, that's it. We've had the grassroots come repeatedly. So there is a desire to do this, whether it's, you know, grounded in reality or it's doable. I think it is. I mean, basically, if we can all just, you know, focus on what we really want and agree with what we want to see as a final product, it's doable. So that's where these, this will come in.
And we have Leslie, who sits on the ad hoc. Would you like to join our discussion here? You have to stand up at a podium.
Welcome, Leslie.
The new...
The new design.
You don't have to duck under the canopy. I don't ever really have to duck.
I can listen to that one.
I brought some other stuff as long as I'm here.
This member, Paul, was saying Leslie Schaller is one of the ad hoc committee members on the Armory Ad hoc Committee.
Okay, well, thank you, Councilmember Patterson, for inviting me. So as you know, my name is Leslie Schaller. I'm the Director of Programs at the Apple Action Center for Economic Networks at 94 Columbus Road, Athens, Ohio. I have had probably a variety of different hats when it has come to grant writing in partnership with the City of Athens. As some of you may recall, during the previous administration, I participated in the Athens Municipal Arts Commission, and also helped secure the financing for the purchase and renovation and additional capital improvements for Arts West. So as someone who loves old buildings, and as someone who also runs a business at the northern end of Court Street, I think I reflect both the opportunity in terms of looking at what feasibility analysis can happen. I don't have any strong opinions necessarily as to what the end uses of that facility might be. I just think it's a little gem at the other end, the city end of Court Street, you know, to kind of match the south end of Baker University Center. And although I think there's been a lot of community engagement in the past, I think there's new momentum, and I think if we can attract more professional development in terms of resources that will help secure financing, then that seems a little more optimistic for me. And I think that's where the traction issue is really problematic. Obviously, if there's $7,000 appropriated, that could be money that is matched with additional applications or other feasibility analysis funding that might be more directed to the building's possible usages. I know in the arts community, there's a strong preference for public performance space, and I think, you know, that can be maybe part of the equation, but we really need to do the due diligence and have a stronger community engagement process. And after maybe the initial RVC analysis, figure out what's really going to be appropriate, because I think, again, you know, to Councilmember Paul's remarks, that we have no idea what the possible budget is, and that budget is going to really hinge on what the end uses of that facility could possibly be. So, you know, I've been recruited, I guess, to sometimes be the downer that I am, the reality check of how money could be appropriated, how money could be utilized, and I will continue in terms of wearing all my hats to participate on the ad hoc. And I would be, as always, more than interested in helping shape any applications for additional funding for the project. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Any questions for Leslie? No questions?
I'm so thorough.
So what I'm hearing, again, is that we want to go forward to doing this RVC study, that looking at whether the line item donations that have been put forward, I think that maybe the people who have put them forward need to clarify that if we just look at building envelope and those sort of things, and not this large-scale plan, pre-planned plan, would be acceptable for them, and that if we need to go and put an ordinance forward, then that couldn't happen. I'm hearing grumbling from Joe.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, no...
It wasn't a grumble. Okay.
It wasn't a grumble. I'm just saying that I think these people have said what they want to do, and we just need to take the money and...
Okay.
Well, you know, we can always collect the money and give it back to them who doesn't cooperate. But I fully expect there would be a second phase where we start looking at the possibilities.
I get the feeling that the people have been donating money because they want to seal the first step.
Yeah.
And this is the first step. This is a necessary first step. And this is, it makes sense. And I think that it's great that people are willing to invest in this. So I appreciate that the community members are coming forward. And so we need to establish a line item, which would probably be in the ordinance, and we can get that forward going after you establish the, what you would like from RVC in the study in September.
Okay. If we get a possibility, we might just try putting all the reports online, the previous history, so everybody has a long view. Obviously, there is interest, but I'd like to have it grounded in reality. There's discussion, of course, as a private-public partnership, the P3s, which seems to be so popular these days. I will probably not take advice for tearing it down, turning it into a parking garage, which I've been given as well. So just to show you the range of things that come out at me, okay? And they said, we need more parking, let's tear it down, put a parking garage there. I don't think that's a credible, useful direction to go. But again, I'm open to suggestions, but the first one is the baseline, as you state, see what we need to do. And just for the records, to start with, because that, to me, is critical.
Sure. So what I see coming forward is bringing this back in September after you establish the minimum requirement that we need from the study, having a quick committee meeting to update it, and then bring forward ordinance. I would not want to do this in the remaining two weeks, because I don't want to have a...
Well, I'll have discussions with RVC and see what else. And I'll probably have to backtrack on the reports as well.
Okay. Great. Any other questions about that? Okay. The second agenda item is the loud animals, mostly of the four-legged type. Other loud animals are not right here.
The, this was in, we discussed this, I think, at our last committee meeting, when it came forward to talk about the loud dog ordinance. And the, there's been a couple iterations that have gone back and forth with the law director's office and the police chief's office, to see what is the best way to work this out. At one point, there was a version that was taking the fine or the citation and having it placed against the individual's or added on to the individual's water bill after discussions with the law director. That was not the way to go. And so therefore, the version that'll go forward has changed somewhat. The section 9.01.05 is, again, loud dog. The police chief felt it's important to change that and kind of broaden that a little bit to where it becomes loud animal. Any loud animal that sustained barking, yelping, whatever's going on, as well as an animal that's outside. So there's clarity to that as well, that the...
In addition to, or are you saying...
No.
No.
No, instead of it being, yeah, instead of, it has to be a dog that's outside, penned up, chained up, fenced in, whatever, that meets all these requirements, where from 50 feet away, you know, prima facie evidence that that dog is a noise nuisance, or whatever the animal is, just creating those sounds.
So wait, so not inside?
Correct.
So if you don't have air conditioning, and you are in a, there's a dog in a house with open windows, and it's going on and on and on and on, and everyone can hear from easily 50 feet, we're saying we're not going to step into that?
That it wouldn't fit with this particular ordinance. It fits under the noise ordinance. It fits, the same thing holds true, is the way the chief, Chief Kyle was framing it, is if you were in your house and you heard something like that from within another house, it falls within the realm of a noise ordinance violation, which is essentially the same. It's 50 foot, prima facie evidence.
Does there have to be somebody home?
That I'm not sure.
Because that was one of the things that we came to discuss this for the first time, is because he couldn't cite, because there wasn't a person available to cite.
Again, I think what Councilmember Patterson is saying is that would not be addressed under this proposal of loud animal. That would be fall under the existing norms.
I don't, even when nobody's home?
I would contend that most officers, if they have the time and are available and not on their run of, would be attempting to reach the individual responsible for the animal that's causing a ruckus and the need to let them know. I don't have an answer to that question. So you're asking, when this was first presented, it was like as if there'd be a citation on a door and you run away, you know, you walk away and that stays. But he was specifically saying that it would, he was, this section would be addressing outside animals?
Well, how then does this differ than our current noise ordinance? If I have a son who takes his guitar or drums outside and beats them...
Obnoxious.
Doesn't the noise ordinance cover that?
It does.
Okay, so then how does this then differ from that?
This, the main difference between the noise ordinance and the loud animal ordinance is that the loud, the loud animal ordinance allows for an officer to arrive at a residence where there may not be someone home and to cite the house. I mean, there's, it's a pocket ticket that's administered, whereas if there's a noise ordinance with someone playing a loud drum inside their house or in their front yard, that's a person. And so you can now cite that human being as opposed to a residence that has no owner.
Okay, if the person who is in the yard beating the drums is 12 years old and the parents are not there, what does the policeman do? Do they give the child, and that's what we're talking about, a child, a ticket?
I would contend, again, that they would be counseling that we've had reports, either you take it inside or you turn it down, just like we, we speak to all our kids.
And if they say no, being obnoxious?
That's usually not a correct response to a police officer.
Probably not, but not again.
You usually do get a ticket that time.
But again, you're talking about a minor, though.
Maybe a 16-year-old would be a better example.
They can pick up a minor at that point.
Right. My other question is the timing of the ordinance. I mean, normally, when you think of noise ordinance really going into high, kick it up higher, is between certain, you know, mostly at night, and so I would expect that this would expand the hours that one can cite. Is that true?
It's modeled after the noise ordinance. Though we're saying not noise, those are the hours of the noise ordinance.
So somebody who needs to work during the day, who has their dog, the neighbor, I mean, the neighbors, when there's a dog barking, I mean, during the day when somebody's playing drums, which my neighbors do, you know, or harp or something, you kind of put certain things, during the day, you kind of say, oh, that's during the day. However, a dog somehow has that noise, that either you're worried about the dog because they're barking for a reason, or you're worried about the person because the dog is barking a whole lot, and during the day, it's almost worse than during the night. So I think that we need to, I know the people who've complained about barks, bark stalking, dogs barking, is all hours.
So this is covering all hours?
It is.
Well, it's not, really, if it's like our noise ordinance, you have to call in a special, you know, after midnight, you kind of can call...
Ten during the week.
Ten during the week.
What we were trying to work with was within, again, we don't have that large of a police...
Right.
What is my term for my...
Force?
Force, thank you. They do add code enforcement. This is modeled after, again, the second part is modeled after the litter violations, similar to that. The code enforcement office, police officers, I was wondering who my sanitarium was, and the auditor reminded me, that could be the Sol of Waste Litter Control Officer, that they can cite under this, so that kind of broadens who can go address it. We don't have that now, so you are just relying on the police that, as you know, could be busy in another area of town, watching, trying to reduce speeding on East State Street and things that we all know. But this would broaden that, not that every, so that was one of them, and we're trying to assist, he's one, the police chief is trying to come up with a solution, that he knows that at least that that would be functional, something he could utilize at his department, so. And what I hear now is you want all hours.
Well, I guess what we're saying is if it's happening during the day, they would call in and say, I mean, I've called in things during the day.
Complaint-based, in other words.
Yes, so during the day, it's complaint-based versus if the officer or whomever is out at 10:00 PM, or, you know, weekend hours, then they'll just go ahead and do it. It doesn't have to be complaint-based, right?
Correct. That's my understanding of this.
So if I'm home during the day, and this dog has been going on and on and on, and I know the people are at work or whatever, and we've had conversations in the past about the barking dog, a neighborly thing to do, maybe, right? And it's happening, I'll call the police.
Correct.
That would be how you would do it.
Yes. Well, someone asked me, the example would be if I were to come to the door and it is a dog that would not stop barking, I said, it's usually when you want your dog to bark.
Dogs that bark, right.
When someone comes to the door, so. So I'll go back to the police chief?
No, I'm still confused here. I'm sorry, I'm dense, I'm old. Seems like we have a noise ordinance that pretty much covers everything that this would do. Again, why are we duplicating ourselves?
I don't think the noise ordinance actually covers animals. I think it covers...
But it's noise, I mean, what noise is noise, right?
We'll check on that. It's noise, it's noise. But this is a different section of the code.
Okay. Again, I'm, I'm, loud, oh, okay, that makes all the difference in the world.
This also expands the personnel who can write a ticket.
Correct.
And that, and my suggestion is if the code officers are going around a neighborhood and they're hearing the dog bark, 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 maybe they need to take it upon themselves to cite, instead of having somebody go...
They don't work nights.
Well, that's the thing, they work during the days, when a lot of people are at work.
Then might be leaving their dogs.
Well, you know, I mean, also, some, I was doing some research in this, and one other town, they had a form on their website that said, to the person who owned the dog, you may not know this, but your dog barks during the day. These are some things that you may be able to try, because I know that I talked to my neighbor, and they didn't know, they were gone at work, and they didn't realize that their puppy was barking all day. And I suggested certain things, and the puppy was happy, and it's now not going to be a barking dog. So, you know, maybe some kind of neighborly sheet that you can put, you know, that you can print out from the website, that you can put on somebody's...
With the citation, with the citation?
Or with a, I don't, I think sometimes, especially when people are at work, they may not, unless, sometimes people are afraid to go to their neighbors because they don't know them, and you don't want to introduce yourself to the neighbor saying, your dog is a jerk, and I'm not getting any sleep. Hi, I'm your neighbor. So I think, you know, on one level, because we do have kind of neighbors that are, neighborhoods that kind of change people... that kind of change people all the time, that we are talking about people we may not know, and not everybody's comfortable going and talking to their neighbor, which would be the best thing to do, but not everybody feels comfortable doing that. And so I think maybe having a, a little-
Hints from hell ways?
Yeah, a hint from your hound. I am barking during the day. And you can put it, you can make it humorous. I mean, the ones I've seen have been a little, I'm barking during the day, I'm either hot or lonely, and they had a little hint on what you could do for-
You could put it on the government channel.
Yeah.
Barking dog panel, about it? We could just tape all the barking dogs there and say, this is your dog.
Yeah, play them back.
Well, I saw a great thing on the government channel the other evening where the gist of it was if you have diarrhea, don't go to the city pool. I found that extremely informative and very, very well produced. Now, why couldn't we do the same thing with a barking dog video? I thought it was phenomenal.
It's actually a standard.
It would have to be, because who in their right mind would do such a thing? But, there it is, okay.
I'd like to mention one more thing, getting back to your question, Member Reisner, and that is that with the noise ordinance as it stands now, as I understand it, it's a $100 misdemeanor that you will receive after you've gone through the warning and you continue to play your noise loudly, they'll come back and you'll be cited with a fourth degree misdemeanor, $100 fine. And I don't think that's something that we want to levy against dogs, barking dogs, to where someone comes, you know, they come along, if we were to match word for word what the noise ordinance says versus a loud animal ordinance and slap someone with a $100, you know, fourth degree misdemeanor right off the bat, someone may not be able to afford that, to pay that for their animal and whatever. You get the picture, I think. And this would be, again, a civil penalty of $20, and if a repeat offense happens within a six-month period of time, it ramps up by double. So it becomes a $40 civil penalty. So that's, that's another feature that's markedly different than we see with the noise ordinance and this change. Mayor?
Again, I'd point out, I'm looking at the police statistics from June 30th to July 6th, which is the latest ones I have. There was eight animal calls last, that week. So that was a week before 4th of July, and year-to-date is 81. Noise complaint, there are five for that week. Of course, year-to-date right now, we're at 319. Okay, so I do not know the intensity or the amount. Animal calls are not the animal barking calls, they're basically animal calls for all species, all things. A technique, if you're talking about trying to be neighborly, get the cell phone number of your next-door neighbor. You could always just put it on speakerphone, put the dog over there and say, look, the dog misses you. And if you do that enough, maybe they'll get the message that their dog does miss them and that the dog is being bolted. But at the same time, we'll work on this. Again, it has to be something we can do, but again, I have no concept of the problem of this, okay? How big your problem is.
The only other problem, well, actually, I have a lot of problems with this, but one other problem is, I was just reading in the paper, Chief Pyle had an interview and talked about how burglaries are up 100% over last year. Okay, well, that to me means the police force should really be doing, as opposed to barking animals. I mean, what's, what's, what's our priorities? We just went to a big discussion about the armory and how we'd love to dream blue sky, but the physical realities are this. Well, we have physical realities here, too. We have a limited police force. I'm sure the police chief would like to have three more people. Can't afford it. Where are you going to get them? Okay?
I, I think the way I read this is the police chief is asking for another tool in his toolbox to help eliminate a problem. It'll be quick and easy for them to go out, assess the situation, put the citation, and move on. I think he's asking for a tool in the toolbox. This has been a complaint many of us council members have heard from constituents. So he's asking for a tool in his toolbox, and here's what the tool is, $20 ticket.
Well, I think something else is toolbar.
I think that another thing that, to follow up on what Member Pappy is saying is, and you just said it yourself, Member Reisner, is that, you know, sure, the police, the police force would love to up their personnel to where they have more officers, and sure, I agree with that, but you've kind of done that, haven't you, by default? Where Section B on here says code enforcement officers, police officers, sanitarians, you can, you've kind of now boosted that to where-
Right, well, that's, that's a point I'd like to get to, is, okay, now I'm a code officer, okay? I'm supposed to be looking at student rentals, I'm supposed to be looking at the code of the house, are you fixing it right, am I doing this? And now you're adding this to me, okay? Now I can just see how that's going to fly at the, at the code office right now, when they see this. Same thing with the sanitarians, okay? I'm supposed to be doing garbage, now I'm in law enforcement. I mean, you're opening up a can of worms here.
Realistically speaking, I don't think we're talking about any additional labor necessarily. I think we're talking about additional enforceability here. And I know it may seem like we're beating a dead horse and people may think that this is an issue that doesn't matter, but the reality is, it is an issue that matters to people in the community because when city council members campaign for public office, this is one of the things that comes up. Second after "Paved my street, please," it's do something about the barking dogs. At least that was the case in my experience. At the point that I campaigned, I was not a dog owner, so I did not have to contend with the issue as property owner. I am now a dog owner, so I have personal experience with the issue, and I would not have a problem if I were cited for having left my dog out in the yard all day and having her bark. Fortunately, that's not a concern for me. But, you know, we need to have some accountability, so I think that this is a step in the right direction. I don't think it's going to mean anybody's not able to respond to a burglary in progress. I think that we're being a little overdramatic if we imagine that suddenly emergency services are not going to be met because everybody is busy responding to barking dog complaints. So let's just, you know, bring it down a little bit and move forward.
Oh, wow.
I would agree with Councilmember Cochran. The whole reason this came up was because so many of us have received that kind of complaint, the very thing, and not, and just as we go to campaign or as we're at the grocery store or something like that, what can be done, so. And I appreciate we've worked with the police chief to find, try and find a resolution to it. And much like when you call the police, it's, when you do call them, they prioritize. And if there's a burglary, then the barking dog is going to be the lower priority, and they, our police force uses good judgment, but as Councilmember Pappy says, it's a tool. And it sounds like the language we've arrived at now was worked at in concert with the police chief. Is that correct?
And the law director's office.
And the law director's office, so.
I think, I think one thing that needs to be pointed out is that when the police respond and they're out in the neighborhood, whether it's, you know, for barking dogs or whatever, that, it's the broken window approach, you know, that happened in New York City. It's like you deal with the broken windows and then the next step doesn't get taken by people. And I think something that I've gotten from constituents about this particular issue, I've had, you know, I have more complaints about barking dogs than I do about people taking plants off their front yard or, you know, people, you know, skateboarding down the sidewalk and blah-dee-blah. I mean, this is something that is, people get hot and heavy about. And so I think that, that it's, behooves us to deal with it. It also gets people out in the neighborhood that, you know, if the dogs are barking, that you know that people are paying attention. If you're, you know, kind of, that people are there, your neighbors are there, and that's good, because then it kind of makes it all more happy, and it's a quality of life issue. And people who are happy in their neighborhoods tend to go outside and there are more eyes on the street. And so I think that it snowballs in a really good way, so.
If I may, I think we have guests in the audience who may want to speak on this particular issue. Absolutely. At the podium, please.
Hi, my name is Andrea Demont, and I am one of your constituents who has been driven up the wall for the past couple of months by a neighbor's dog. I wanted to thank, I know he's not here, but I wanted to thank Chief Pyle for, I don't know if he introduced this to you or you introduced this to him, but this was a really important thing to do. And also to the members, I think, Member Patterson, you brought this up at the last committee meeting, so I wanted to thank you for bringing this up and giving it the attention it deserves. Those members who have been mentioning that we shouldn't be devoting that much time to this issue because burglaries are far more important, well, of course, you're right, but I think that kind of negates the whole effectiveness of the noise ordinance. Yes, burglaries are more important than noise issues, but does that mean that we should be neglecting the noise issues? I don't think so. And I was very happy when I reviewed the proceedings at the last committee meeting to find out that the committee was exploring applying these rules to dogs, whether they are inside or outside, but now suddenly these have just become outside dogs, and that's scary. Because the, my neighbor's dog, first of all, I'm, it's a very, very well-behaved dog when the owners are there, but when they leave, it kind of turns into a hound from hell and it barks its head off until the owners come back, leaving us to put up with the noise from the creature. So the, I think that the intent of your discussion last time was to address this loophole that doesn't really exist with other kinds of noise. For example, if a Athens resident turns up their stereo to 10 and is blasting loud music out of their home, can they be cited if they leave? If there's nobody home and the music is blaring? I'm not quite sure how that works in the noise ordinance, but it's definitely a problem with dogs. So I do think that whoever is going to be enforcing this, probably the police, you guys have to keep the ability for whoever is doing the enforcement to cite the residents, even if the residents aren't home or if they don't answer the door when the policeman knocks. Because I think it's probably a pretty well-known, I think it's probably a pretty well-known behavior of dogs that they do that. They bark to let you know that they've been separated from the pack and they bark until the pack comes back, and then they're pretty happy, so they stop it. So please don't go in that direction, because that's kind of alarming if you're not going to allow the residents to be cited. And also, this issue about the residents can only be cited if the dog is outdoors. What my neighbor has done a couple of times is put the dog inside their very small home where it stands next to the sliding glass door and barks its head off. And that one piece of glass is not very effective in reducing the volume, and I can still hear it resounding throughout my apartment. So I think that in issues with the noise ordinance, does it matter whether the noise is coming from inside or outside, whether the band is playing inside the house or outside the house? I'm not that familiar with the ordinance, so I don't really know whether that makes a difference, but I don't think we should be applying that logic differently to dogs. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Andrea. Absolutely. Ouch.
My name is Kent Taylor, and I'm a friend of Andrea's. I have witnessed that dog. I have heard it from the streets, and I'm thinking the proposal is missing a few things. The dog is inside. We are also inside, and we still hear it. I have heard it when she's called me on the phone. I have a video recording, 20 minutes, non-stop yapping. She has tried many times to connect with the neighbor. The neighbor has called her names, has threatened to call the police on her for trespassing. She has done the neighborly thing to address this issue. Excuse me. The neighbors don't do anything about it. To me, there's a couple of simple fixes that are not included. One, other than citing the neighbor, you can also make them attend an obedience training class with the dog. A city council-sponsored one could generate revenue for the city council, for the city. Hey, you have to go and take your dog to this obedience class, because it's not just the dog, the dog is doing what it's supposed to do. You need to know that you're responsible for the health and safety and well-being of that pet and the benefits of your neighborhood. It seems to me that there's a couple of things that are missing out of this thing, and I hope this idea doesn't just get put off and shoved away, because it's very irritating and it doesn't matter what time of the day. If it's more than five minutes and that dog is barking, it's a nuisance. Whether it's indoors, especially if it's indoors and you can hear it from your indoor place, then it's even more of a nuisance. And when the neighbors don't go in any kind of neighborly response and they basically threaten you to get off their property, well, if you're not causing the dog to bark and it's barking, then, okay, there's a problem. And yeah, there might be burglaries going on, there might be fires and other things that the police need to be responding on, but from what I've been hearing in this council session, they're not overlapping. So if they have time to go see a dog and say, hey, we need you here, I'm sure they're going to hit lights and siren and go off and take care of the other things. Another thing, too, is in the complaint process, to legitimize the complaint, what if you added in something, a visual or audio recording? It'll show, hey, five minutes, 10 minutes, an hour, two hours, all night long, at 1:00 in the morning, when the neighbors are there and they won't respond, and the dog is still out in the backyard barking. So I think it's a great idea, this should not be overlooked. I, as a resident, enjoy the peaceful beauty and the serenity of Athens. I think it's a phenomenal place, I'm so glad I moved here. That dog, though, that I, and I don't even live there, I've just visited her a couple of times, and I've heard it. And I've had issues with animals before. I'm not pro pet, I mean, I'm sorry, I'm not against pets. I love them, I happen to be allergic to them, so I don't have any, but can't take a pet away from somebody necessarily unless they're neglecting it. Well, after a second or third time, they're kind of neglecting their responsibility as a pet owner. And they and the dog both could do better by going to an obedience school. Hey, you have to go to the school, you have to show us that you did the certificate training. Army does it all the time. Show us your certificate that you completed the training. Maybe next time we'll waive the fine or we'll reduce the fine, but next time double it or triple it. But that's what I wanted to say. I have seen this, and I have video recordings of the dog, of a dog in question, and it's 23 minutes long, so, inside their house. Thank you.
Thank you. Member Paul.
Thank you, I appreciate the comments. I can add that this has been a challenging issue on a number of levels, because as I've mentioned before in past meetings, that the community members who've approached me have been fearful or hesitant to call the police because they, because of the weight that comes with that. They're just, they don't know what will, how, what it'll accomplish and/or they don't want to rat on their neighbors. But I recently bumped into a citizen who had moved away from the West Side neighborhood, so this person and their family purchased a larger house because their family was growing, and I asked how the new house was coming along. They were at the hardware store purchasing paint, and his first comment was, it's much quieter, because he had been up to, you know, here with frustrations. He's a writer and he's a stay-at-home father, and had been frustrated by all means with barking dogs. So I know it's affecting many people. We have two courageous people this evening who spoke about the issue, and I applaud that, but it's affecting a lot of people in the community. So it's definitely a quality of life issue, and we all live together trying to make the best of it. And I think we owe it to the community to address this and begin to take baby steps and continue to proceed, and if we're not accomplishing everything, then we continue to amend the laws and make more adjustments. So I appreciate this and support the efforts that we're moving forward with hopefully. Thank you.
Y'all looking at me.
Well, what I'm hearing is that we need to work on this a bit more.
That's what I heard.
I think that there's an issue with inside versus outside, and that there's a concern about the ability of somebody to go and discuss things with their neighbors and trying to identify methods of helping that along. Maybe what we need to do, I think that the idea of having people who have so many citations go to doggy training school is brilliant personally. I think that that, you know, it is, it's not the dog necessarily, it's the dog-person combination. And so I think that there are problem dogs, and there are problem dog people in neighborhoods, and they need to be id- in neighborhoods, and they need to be identified also. Because most of the people who complain to me, they, you know, it's the same dog over and over and over, it's the same house over and over and over, so maybe there needs to be some, it's different than a band, you know, or those sort of things.
Can we just add that in? I mean, I think the chief has really looked over this a lot, you've worked with the law director a lot. I feel like we've talked about this a lot. I mean, is this something, I mean, if it, if we bump it back to the chief and say, the daytime issue isn't, what, do you feel like you're satisfied with this to also deal with the daytime issue, and we can just move on? I mean, my guess is, I think he feels like we can move on. Or no?
What I heard, and I know Councilwoman Reisner's trying to say something, but I kept hearing that you want all hours, you want daytime, you want to include inside, also plant, complaint-based, and Councilwoman Reisner's asked me about comparing to how we deal with it now in terms of noise ordinance and what have you.
But I think the chief has vetted a lot of that. The chief and the law director have vetted that piece.
They have.
Yes. I think the issue between inside and outside needs further...
Is probably the main issue.
Because as you remember, initially, it was all-encompassing. It was inside and outside, and then this was a recent revision to where it was outside noise.
Well, I would like to know what, within the boundaries of what council can and cannot legislate, can we have a penalty that mandates someone attend a training class? I mean, is that within our ability? I know we can fine people, we can do that.
Court doesn't.
Well, the court doesn't, but that's, that's a little different, isn't it?
Good question for the law directors, though.
But you could also just...
Have we ever done it? Is there a precedent for it? I can't think of anything like that.
You could, you could skip the first fine if you went to training school, or something like that.
Right, either or, sort of.
Yeah, that would be our...
Right.
We could do that.
We do that on the litter.
Litter.
Litter, and they get, can do community service.
Sure. They're in the court system at that point, then.
Right.
Oh, that's true, that's a mystery.
Yes, right, that all comes from court.
Sorry.
That's diversion.
That's what I thought. We're actually talking about a piece of legislation that would say, this is what will happen to you. Instead of a $20 fine, you will do this.
But if I read this Section B that you cited, and I assume this is what everybody's working on, essentially, it says, let's see. Okay, the notice will be given by delivering such a tag to violate, the violator, or fixing it to the dwelling unit housing of said violator. Violation Section A shall be administrative offense requiring a fine of $20. Fines subsequent to violations within six months shall double. Any person cited with this offense who wishes to appeal the violation shall visit the police department, Athens Police Department, receive a minor misdemeanor citation.
Into court.
And into court, providing a notice and an opportunity to be heard, which shall serve as an appeals process. So in other words, if they say, no, that wasn't my dog, I contest it, they say, here, go to court.
Go to court.
Okay.
Okay.
And again, the way I'm reading this is that it's going to be fixed to the door, dwelling, so it really doesn't matter if the person's there or not, if I'm reading this correctly. I don't, probably it needs to be embellished on that, so I don't see this as a, you know, indoor/outdoor. And I think, if my memory's correct, and again, it's been many years, if they, if they come to a house that's got a lot of music blaring, and there's the doors are wide open, and there's nobody there, they go in and find out what's going on, you know? So I suspect they'd investigate. Of course, I don't think the dog would let them in, but at the same time, I think they'd be cited just the same.
Mayor, in Section...
Is this the wrong version?
No, well, no, you have the same one. Section A, though, if you read Section A, the red bold...
Timing, yes.
Animal outside.
Okay.
And then it goes on further down, again, speaking to animal kept outside, so that's what's currently in this. But again, this can be visited, you know?
I will come back with what is going to be deemed doable and referenced, and vetted, hopefully, by, well, I did not receive confirmation, I didn't seek it either, that the law director had approved it, that you indicated that...
This latest version, sorry.
The, this particular version, the issue that the law director had before with the version period was the fact, was the fine structure, and how that was going to play itself out, attaching the fine to someone's water bill. And so this was changed, so this can still be, whatever gets, whatever this becomes, we'll go through the law director for final approval to make sure that this is fine. But the only issue that she, that the law director, actually Deputy Law Director or Assistant Law Director had with this, who's the person who had eyes on, was again, the fee structure issue.
Okay, so what I hear is that we just, that this needs a little more work, and that we can revisit this.
It's going forward.
It's going forward. And, you know, one of the big things that would help is if the county went back to having a animal control officer that came into the city, because I remember when I first moved here, I called them and they went, dealt with it, so, and that would be really nice, so people could also direct their problems with dogs to the county commissioners and let them know that we're part of the county and we'd like some dog enforcement.
Yeah, I think at that time, it was shared service. I haven't had a conversation with the county commissioners lately, probably about four years back I've talked to them, and they didn't seem to be interested.
Well, you know, maybe if enough constituents out there let them know, we pay dog tags in this city, and, you know, we should get some service, you know? So...
Where's all that money go?
That's right. Where does all the money go, and if it's not coming in the city? And that, the dog shelter, you know, is great, but there's other aspects of dogs that need to be addressed. And I can just see money and questions everyone's hating me.
I would like to know an exact amount from the amount of dogs that are in the Athens city limits, how much that money that generates for the county right now, obviously.
That would be a public records request you could make, right?
Yep. We would like to know. Or a constituent out there, you know, just burn their ears, so, so, anyway.
The honor of office.
Where does it go?
Okay.
We'd like to know.
And we'd like to know.
I thank you, I thank both of you for coming tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
A lot of positive insight into possible solutions.
It's still moving forward.
It is.
So I have one miscellaneous, real quick. And this is to bring forward another extravaganza of resource management that the state is, and the feds are thinking about doing in response to the fracking boom that is happening in our neck of the woods and out of our state. Right now, there is a permit application in front of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for a offloading site, an offloading port site in Meigs County on the Ohio River, so that they can bring barges filled with fracking injection fluid waste into our state, just like treating our state like other dumping grounds. Right now, the permit is being put in by a company out of Texas, and I would like to put forward a one reading resolution next week that adamantly says that this is way bad idea for the Army Corps of Engineers to permit the docking of barges filled with fracking waste to be offloaded. Part of the problem is, is that there's the barges, and they offload, you know, however many millions of gallons per year, and they're not necessarily little trucks that go driving around to all these injection wells all over, around in our area. They have to store it onsite in containers, giant tanks, and where, oh, where was that? Where they had a tank explode or leak right above somebody's well, you know, their water intake system. Oh, was that in Miss Virginia? Where 300,000 people didn't have water for however long, and however long that tip to clean up caused economic devastation. So this is just such a bad idea, and so I would like to bring it forward.
Well, the other issue is that people think for some reason, whether they're governmental agencies or whomever, that there's economic development pieced in with this, and I honestly don't know where the economic development piece is. Maybe if you own a trucking company, but I would think your insurance rates and everything else are very high, maybe the people who own the actual injection well make some money, but, you know, in terms of economic development, I honestly do not weigh out the health and safety that we as people on council or in government have to deal with, and deal with the regulations day in and day out. So I don't understand where the economic development piece is there. So I support this type of resolution.
I support it as well, and largely because when I look at the map as to where the proposed barge off-putting site is, it's right on 7 and 33. And that tells me that fracking waste is going in one of two places.
Right.
And that's, that's a big fear of mine. So I support it.
And we've already seen how the natural, the ODNR deals with local concerns about health and safety issues. They just basically blow it off, and we have repeatedly. And so I think, you know, we can do a resolution to the Army Corps of Engineers, because this is a whole nother regulatory entity, and it's a federal entity, so they are removed from all the political pressure that the ODNR has been under, and conflict of interest, which I think that they're under, so.
I have another miscellaneous.
Just one last thing to interject there. The Army Corps of Engineers will take comments, but they have to be in writing, as in, you actually had to sit down and print it out, put it in an envelope and put a stamp on it. No emails are accepted, nothing online. So if you want to comment on it, it has to go to the Army Corps of Engineers in writing.
That's what we do, right?
Yeah.
Mayor?
Just one last miscellaneous. Members Cochran and Patterson have been working with us about the electric aggregation. There is a draft RFP on the county's website right now. We're taking, as I say, draft, because we're taking input from various suppliers on how to modify that, just so you know what's going on in that step. For the feedback, I had, there was a meeting earlier today at 3:00, I know you guys were busy, it's almost a standing meeting. We got some feedback from some of the suppliers, thinking that what we've got as an original format is fairly good and fairly innovative. We're still working our way through, we'll have a final draft, and eventually, the hope is to get all this squared away by September, I believe, so just to give you a progress report.
Thanks for that, because we did pass it in November, so I think, from the public's point of view, being able to work through all this under a year's period of time is realistic.
Okay.
I think that...
We'll keep your, you know...
So it's easy to find on the website?
What?
It's on the website, you say?
It's on the county commissioner's website.
The county commissioner, not the city.
Not the city. We could actually mirror it if need be. I haven't gotten around to getting that to the, to Scott or anything like that. Again, it's a draft, it's just showing the priorities, what we'd like to see in an RFP, what we'd like to go over. We're probably going to have a meeting actually here, I think it's August 4th, I think we scheduled it. That would be like a pre-RFP meeting, just to get some feedback and start whittling it down. Talking to Roger Wilkins, I think he's gotten feedback from about 15 to 20 people, maybe, in terms of different suppliers, some just saying, hi, we're interested, but we'll see what happens on that. And again, the idea is to look at renewables, local resiliency of renewables in general, local or not, and also the structure of how we want to grow as a, an organization, whether a council of governments, or what kind of structure we have. We have been certified as a, an aggregator from PUCO.
Okay, Member Paul, when we come up here, please.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you.
Let's make this paper. 9:00.